Thank you for joining us today and thank you so much for braving the storm and rainy weather. The city council members will be out shortly. They're just finishing up their closed session meeting. Thank you and congratulations to everybody here. Mayor Lentz, I'm gonna go ahead and count down, counting down 10. Two and one.
Alright, welcome everyone to our city council meeting. Sorry we're running a little late. We had a closed session meeting and that ran a little bit longer than we thought. But thank you for your patience. Would please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Ingrid, roll call please.
We have no request under roll call item A, so I'll do the roll call now. Councilmember Davis. Here. Councilmember Kern.
Present.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Lentz.
Here. Alright, so a report out of closed session. Tom?
Yes, Mayor Lentz. The council met in closed session and took up two liability claims, or D and E, on the closed session agenda. The council approved, accepted both. The council also gave real property negotiator, in this case the city manager, direction under F and under G. The council discussed me and decided how to go forward in the future.
You did alright there, Tom. So, thank you. Alright, I'll take a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion in second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Awards and presentations. So, it's great having a full house. I know why you guys are all here because the work that we do is so exciting and you want to spend the entire night just listening to us talk about city issues. No, we're here tonight to recognize and honor. And so, the first award presentation is commending coaches and players of the Brisbane 8th grade boys' basketball team for winning the North County Recreational League Championship. So, congratulations. Right, that's awesome. So, I think that's, we're just recognizing them, correct?
Well, actually, I know we have at least one coach here tonight, guys? Both the coaches. Maybe we didn't invite?
We have Park and Rec.
You know, briefly about the big game and winning that championship.
Yes.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to the city of Brisbane for deciding to recognize the achievement of these young men. It was a really good game and a really good season. We were able to go on an eight-game winning streak to finish it out. And I really, you know, what y'all are doing here and supporting this program in partnership with the school is a really good thing. Ricardo and Jeff have been so supportive of this team, all the things that they're doing. They still make it to all our games, you know? In the final, we played against Burlingame. And just for some context, Burlingame has five 8th grade teams that they draw from.
Wow.
And we have one. And we were able to beat them in the championship in a very close game.
It wasn't that close, Coach.
It was, you know, it was, it was an exciting game to the end and we had several players here who really stepped up amidst maybe some questionable fan reaction from the other team. So, they still were able to keep their composure. So again, thank you so much for taking the time to recognize their achievements.
Yeah, well, thank you, Coach, for teaching these boys life lessons.
Mayor Lentz, we also have commendations for each player and all the coaches.
That's right. Let's do a big picture and we'll pass out the awards there. Yeah, that'd be great, Jeff.
Come to the mic, though.
Alright, here are the players. Thomas Bouchard. Stand right over here. Go, Ryan Chan. Enzo Coriano. He's not here. Wilson Leung. Sean Lung. Paxton McDowell. Giovanni... I can't say your last name. CJ Ruiz. James Trout. James Tulio. Gavin Vanna. Coach Aaron. Coach Don. Alright, great. See, maybe the council will gather around and... Yeah, we'll stand up here.
Do you want us to move the podium?
Yeah, the podium. Mmm. We can't move that far, though. So, how about we move it behind you guys? Just hide it, okay, in the photo?
There you go.
Just really fast. Just stand in front of it and hide it.
Short people in front of us.
We'll squeeze in. Squeeze in the tracks. You asked for it.
It's a big basketball team.
It is. I know. That's why they whine. They got some tall boys.
No, I mean, like, it's a long place for a basketball team.
Yeah.
They can stay rested.
Alright, wrestlers in front.
No, no, you guys go in there. Jeff, go on the other side.
We need some people kneeling.
Alright.
Trade places. Down a little.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I appreciate the coach recognizing Jeff and Ricardo. Jeff Franco and Ricardo Monroe do an extraordinary amount of work supporting Parks and Rec activity in this community and I just wanted to call them out for everything they do. They're at every event, every game, everything. So, thanks, guys. Really appreciate it.
Alright, now go home and do your homework. Alright. Up next is the Lunar New Year proclamation, so...
Let the room go first. Did we provide cookies for them?
It really did.
Leftover pizza?
Alright. That was excellent. That was so nice to have those boys here. Alright, so now we're moving on to the Lunar New Year proclamation. So, whereas the Lunar New Year, also known as the Spring Festival, is celebrated by millions around the world to mark the beginning of a new lunar calendar year, symbolizing renewal, hope, and the promise of prosperity and good fortune. And whereas 2025 is the year of the snake, the sixth animal in the 12-year Chinese zodiac cycle, which is characterized by wisdom, transformation, adaptability, and introspection. And whereas the Lunar New Year is a 15-day celebration which commenced on January 29, 2025, and whereas it is marked by many traditions such as decorations, community, and family gatherings, festival meals, and cultural performances that honor ancestry and the shared values of unity, respect, and joy. And whereas the city of Brisbane appreciates the many contributions of our Asian-American communities, enhancing the fabric of our city's rich cultural diversity, and now therefore be it resolved that the city council and the city of Brisbane does hereby proclaim January 29, 2025, as Lunar New Year and encourages citizens to join in the Lunar New Year celebrations during this 15-day period between the first new moon of the lunar calendar and the first full moon in mid-February. And receiving tonight's proclamation is Anna Lam on behalf of the Brisbane Business Lucky House. And I know that she's also someone who volunteers and contributes greatly to our community. Come on up, Anna, please. Alrighty. There you go. I'm glad you brought your son with you. Thank you. And if you want to say a few words, please. Bring it down. There you go.
So, I actually grew up in Brisbane since 5th grade. I don't know if everyone can hear me, but I just want to thank the city of Brisbane. I really love Brisbane and I'm glad that we can celebrate Lunar New Year because it's important to my family. We gather together, we eat, have a good time. We are doing a fundraiser tomorrow for Brisbane Elementary School. My son is going there too and my brothers also went there. I went to Lippman Middle School. So, I'm just very excited to support the city and with my kids growing up here in the future for over 30 years that I've been here. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. February is also Black History Month and I have a proclamation also to read. Whereas February is designated as Black History Month and the theme for this year, African-Americans and Labor, underscores the significant contributions of African-Americans and their labor in shaping Black history and the development of our nation. And whereas this year's theme focuses on the various and profound ways that work and working of all kinds intersect with the collective experiences of African-Americans from the atrocities of slavery to the rich legacy of Black entrepreneurship, from labor leaders to essential workers to company executives. And whereas, let us reflect on our shared history and be inspired by continued progress as we continue to work together toward liberty and opportunity for all. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Brisbane officially designates February 25, or February 2025, as Black History Month and urges all community members to participate in local celebrations and events. And receiving tonight's proclamation, a chair of our Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accountability Idea Committee, Anna Dennis. Please come on. The Annas are in the house tonight. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Anna, would you like to say a few words? Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. It's a great honor to accept the Black History Month proclamation on behalf of the Idea Committee, particularly this year. As a city, I hope we can continue to recognize the value of building community through learning, service, and inclusion. Also, if I may, a couple of announcements from my Idea Committee. I wanted to take this opportunity to let everyone know there's a Black History Month event at the library on Tuesday, February 18. The event is called Have I Got a Story to Tell? And it's storytelling through music and song, and should be a lot of fun. Secondly, the Idea Committee is also hosting our first community service project to honor the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. This year, we're excited to partner with the Brisbane resident Peter Styler, Director of Catholic Worker Hospitality House, and Sam Gruna. In the spirit of that partnership, for the month of February, we're holding a toiletry drive to help unhoused individuals and family by dropping off shampoo, conditioner, soap, and bathroom tissue to City Hall or the Annex during regular office hours, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 4:30, and Friday, 8:30 to 12:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And thank you for serving on the Idea Committee. All right, so we're at the point in our meeting for oral communications, and this is an opportunity for anyone who would like to speak before the council about an item that's not on tonight's agenda. So I have some slips here. The first one is Teresa Jimenez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight in regard to wanting to talk about something being done with the old library space. It's been five years empty. I keep hearing how bad the condition is. The roof leaks badly. There is damage. It's going to be torn down, possibly. If true, that is sad, very sad. This property is owned by Brisbane. Why are the properties in town, like the teen center, unmaintained, which ensures the self-fulfilling prophecy of getting torn down? I have worked as a property manager for the past 16 years, managing commercial, industrial, and residential properties all over the Bay Area. I know firsthand how expensive it is to let repairs go. In the case of leaks not being fixed, you have resultant water damage followed by potentially mold, and then it's a huge and much more costly issue. This is unconscionable and nonsensical to me. Talk about being fiscally responsible? This is not it, in my view. Back to the library space. I feel like we... Excuse me, I lost my place. I'll get that in a minute. I feel we need to fill it with something that serves the community in a helpful way or brings a bit of vibrance. If I were going to throw my idea into the pot, I would personally love to see a co-op art center, not just one that showcases art, but also a space for the community to do art. I can go on and on about all of my ideas, many of which I have already put into use in my own studio, but those should be hashed out in future committee meetings to fine-tune if the idea sounds like something the community wants to do. I am not presenting this just to get my own idea out there. I just want to see something in that space, and I would encourage others to start thinking about how they'd like to see the space used. I propose the city fix the roof as a start, a step in the right direction, and then invite the community in to tour the space, stay for a presentation, similar to what was done for the park plan, and ask people what they'd like to see by dropping ideas in a box, and then maybe vote on the top three or five, maybe more, based on what seems doable. If we have something that floats to the top, put a subcommittee together and let them bring it to fruition. My suggestion of a co-op art center does not mean I would not get excited about or support another idea when presented with something I felt would be great for our town, but let's start talking about it. Let's start hearing from our community. My parting thoughts on this topic, and really most important to me, is that the building be repaired and the top floor be used. We have a lot of people and organizations who rely on the community center below. Without something planned for above and further years of neglecting the care of the building, we will eventually see the end of the community center. As well... As it will... Excuse me, I lost my place. As it will get to the point of no return and need to be torn down, which I hope is not the plan behind the inaction. The community center needs to stay open. Many organizations, as I said, depend on the space: the seniors, the Lions, Mob, and other groups. Most important to me personally, Brisbane Dance Workshop. Many of our students walk from BES and Lipman to their classes as they have working parents. Many of our students, if not most, will not have a way to get up to Mission Blue as an alternative. And I fear it would be the end of BDW if we lose the community center. That would be a tragedy. Please, let's make the entire building viable once again. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Teresa. Next, I have Lisa Greenlee.
Hello, council. I would just like to write on what was just said by Teresa about the old community center space above the bottom space, the library space, and the entire building. Money has been allocated for a study on the building, I understand, that was supported by the City Council, and I really appreciate that. I think that's a good first step. So thank you for that. As a member of the Park and Rec Committee, it has been on the top of our agenda for a really long time to have this building looked at and brought up to viability. And we have, for the last five years, have gotten nowhere with the funding that it will take or even the interest in looking at a potential future plan. I think without a plan or without the engagement of the public for what could be a plan for this space, it's going to continue to languish. And I just think that's a waste of potential for what this building could be. I think this space has a lot of potential. I love the idea of an artist space. I support that. But I'm also open to whatever ideas the public brings to the city. And the beauty of a co-op is just like Silver Spot, which the city owns the building, and yet a group has come in and used the facility to benefit the community through childcare, and the city has supported that by giving them the building and saying, okay, you are a co-op, you know, you run this responsibly, and we will let you use the building. We will let you use the space. So I like the co-op idea, but I'm not putting forth any ideas unless the whole community is involved. Anyways, it also has great outdoor space, which I think that is underutilized. And even seeing some public art being put back there for the community to enjoy might be another way of kind of tying the art and vibrancy into reviving the space. I see classroom space. I see nonprofit meeting space. I see multi-use community activity space, possibly drama classes, and maybe just a less formal space than what we have in the library maker space, something that's a little more durable and not quite so clean. It doesn't have to be perfect, you know? That's the great thing about creative spaces. They can be a little rough, you know? Anyways, I just would encourage you all to kind of open up this process and get the conversation going. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lisa. All right, any others for oral communications? All right, Michelle.
There's also been a hand raised for a while.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I am so happy that you guys got up and said that, because this has been on my mind, too. And I've put a lot of time and energy, actually, into that building over the years. We, the dance floor, that maple dance floor, came from a ballet school in Sacramento that West Wind International Folk Ensemble rescued when that building was taken. And we brought it down here, and we stored it for a couple of years, several years. And then a group of dedicated people took that apart, led by Bob Decker, took it apart piece by piece and reassembled it in the bottom of the community center. It's a spring-loaded dance floor. It is the best dance floor in Brisbane, hands down. There is no better dance floor in Brisbane anymore. That's a very, very valuable space. And I remember when the American Legion Hall was there, and they tore it down to build the new library. It's unfortunate that someone thought to plant redwood trees. It's really not the tree to plant there, and that's part of the problem with the roof, because those trees weren't properly pruned and maintained. Everybody thinks they're ancient trees. They were planted in the mid-'80s. They're gigantic now. And Cliff, you and I worked really hard in that back to make a garden. You really supported Mountain Watch's work to make that a garden. And a year ago, we were using the space for a Mountain Watch thing, and I was appalled at the state of degradation of the space. Dirty windows. The back, you know, yard was not clean. And it just broke my heart, and we worked really hard to get it clean enough to really have a nice event there. And, you know, this is a really important Brisbane building. We put a lot into it, and it's much-loved. It's right in the heart of the community. It's walking distance. It's used for a lot of different events. And to let it go and not fix the roof and not use it for the community, there's so many good ideas. And there's really no place... I mean, it'd be great to have a place where somebody could meet somebody else for a meeting behind a closed door. There is an office there. You know, there's nothing like that at the current library, where you can actually meet and have a conversation with someone that's, you know... And I just think this is a really valuable space. I love the idea of having it as a, you know, co-op and art classes. The sunrise room isn't large enough for some of the things that people need to do. And it's so geared towards seniors that other people don't feel like maybe they could come there to participate in an art class or something. So I think this is really a valuable community space, and it really needs to be open to the community. So thank you so much. Let's not let all that hard work and effort go to waste just because we have a shiny new library.
All right, all right. Anyone else for oral communications? All right, well, thank you for speaking tonight.
We have a raised hand also online.
Online. CMF, I'm sorry.
Hi there, thank you. Yeah, this is Chris Flackaski, and I have a request, a plea, actually, for those building the agenda for this meeting and for other meetings, because there was a situation yesterday with complete streets. My request is that the item descriptions be clear about whether the item is informational only or will require a decision or some action. If a decision or an action is required, sufficient information should be made available with the agenda so that the public can make a reasonable evaluation for their own participation. Items M and N are both examples of what I consider unclear descriptions. In the case of M, it would seem that the council is to provide guidance on the timeline. Though there is a timeline in the attachment, is that only a proposed timeline? What factors would the council need to consider to provide some guidance? Why is this item on the agenda? It seems to me that this is an inform-only from staff. But as written, it could lead to a lengthy conversation consisting of restating previously offered opinions. Or worse, it might lead to a motion for something that the public has not been able to consider in advance of the meeting. In the case of N, as in Nancy, the agenda says this is a discussion. Yet the attachment indicates that this is to result in a recommendation. It's not clear to me how the public can provide input on this. The four items that are offered as illustrative examples lack detail. Are these recommendations supposed to be based on whatever is top of mind at the moment this item comes up on the agenda? I contend that one of the reasons these meetings are as long as they are is in part due to this lack of clarity. And I suggest that in the future, the council, please consider if each agenda item would make sense for the average resident and resist approving the agenda if there is this lack of clarity of purpose. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chris. All right. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that a council member would like to pull in order for further discussion, or I will entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to adopt consent items E through J.
Second that.
Okay, we have motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, great. Thank you. All right, so our awards and presentations are continuing because we have some great people who are volunteering to serve on our planning commission and our public art advisory committee. So... City Clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lenz. Tonight, we will be swearing in the following city commissioners and committee members for their reappointment. We have planning commissioners for a term through January 2029. That's Rol Funka, Douglas Gooding, Pamela Sayzand. And for the Public Art Advisory Committee for a term through January 2027, we have Diane Glasman, Danielle Kelsted, who unfortunately can't join us tonight, and Camille Salmon. Everybody can please come up. We'll go ahead and swear you in. Stand over here.
We can all do it at once? Okay, here we go.
Neither can I. I know I haven't read anything.
Oh, in order of...
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I state your name. No. Sorry.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm... That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of California. And I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your willingness to serve again. So you provide so much experience and passion and knowledge to both bodies that you serve on, and, yeah, we're just in gratitude for your service. So thank you. All right, so moving on to old business. Ordinance revising the start time of city council meetings to 6:30 PM. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lenz, members of the council. At the last council meeting, the council approved a change of the meeting time from 7:30 to 6:30. Given that this item is in the town's municipal code, it requires an ordinance change. The staff has provided the council tonight with two options. One is an urgency ordinance, which requires four votes, which would mean that the next council meeting on the 20th would be at 6:30. The other option is to use the regular ordinance process... The other option is to use the regular ordinance process, which is 30 days, which means that the first council meeting would, uh, under the new rubric, would be March, in, the second meeting in March. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, city manager Dennis. Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Call him.
The staff report, is it on? Yes. The staff report indicates that council should also direct the starting time of meetings of other council-appointed advisory boards be similarly changed. I would like to suggest that we have committees and commissions do their own polling and discussion on this. I've already heard from one planning commissioner who indicated an early start time could be problematic or a hardship. So, I'd just like to make this clear, that I, I think we need to accommodate a lot of these people. It, it's very difficult for them with work, they're volunteers. Let's make sure that, that we make it easy for them to get there and not induce more hardship in their lives.
I agree.
I would agree.
Yeah, no, the commission should, and committees, should make up their own start time, within reason, of course. All right. Any other questions for staff? Okay, and we'll open it up to the public. Anyone have any questions or comments for the council? No. Okay, so we'll move on to then council discussion. Maybe we'll start here, work our way down. Frank?
Um, I'm supportive of meetings beginning at 6:30 PM.
Okay, all right. Calling.
I'm okay with 6:30.
All right. Karen?
I'm okay with the meeting starting. I'm okay with the meeting starting at 6:30. We didn't really discuss what would happen publicly or in this ordinance with closed session. And it's the intention of this council to handle those still prior to the meeting or after the meeting. And my only comment would be that sometimes when we have closed session items, they can be in-depth and that it's important that we, well, for any of our work, that we have fresh minds. But I think that it's always better to have a fresh mind when we do the closed session items. And so I would prefer to, when possible, schedule those before the meeting. Again, it really depends on what, how long they're going to need to be. And, and with any meeting starting earlier, it, it can preclude people who have a day job from attending because they have other items they need to do. And so I would hate that we make it where people cannot attend because of the early hour instead of not attend because of the late hour.
Yeah, I, I don't think we would ever, you know, put forth a meeting that a council member could not attend. So, we, we would work with, staff would work with all of us to make sure that any closed session meeting wasn't a hardship.
It is my understanding.
But I, I agree with your, your concerns, though.
It is my understanding too, and Tom can correct me, but we also can have closed sessions that aren't, that aren't connected to a council meeting. We could have them like the day before if, let's say, we knew it was going to be, we needed an hour, an hour and a half, and it was difficult for someone to make it that early. We could just have it on another day of the week, so.
I'm sure we could all work together and, and figure it out if we had a very important item that was going to take a lot of time, so.
Yeah.
My mayor, if I may, Mayor Lenz, sorry.
That's all right.
Just for the public's recommendation, the, for the public's knowledge, if the closed session were to happen, for example, on a Wednesday at noon, you would still get a report out at the next public meeting of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
So, as far as the urgency ordinance, to me, I'm not sure I see the urgency.
I agree.
In this. And I know that it's not quite that there's any difference in whether you do an urgency ordinance or a non-urgency ordinance, other than the implementation time it takes. It just, I think, is sending the wrong message if we do an urgency ordinance when there is no urgency.
I, I 100% agree with that.
Yeah, city manager, you want to chime in on that, the urgency versus the non-urgency and why that was brought forward?
The short answer I'll give, and then I'll defer to Tom on a longer answer. The short answer is to give options, should the council wish to consider an earlier opportunity to start at 6:30.
So, it's for giving options.
Yeah, Tom, did you want to expand on what sort of findings need to be made in an urgency ordinance?
It, it's generally that you're trying, you're acting in the public's interest. It's not just public safety, per se. And given the, there was quite a bit of discussion between the city manager, Michael, and I, and at the end of the day, this is the latest starting council in the county. And apparently, it's become a bit of a problem. So, we thought that we did meet the urgency ordinance standard, but there's nothing that requires the council to adopt it on urgency. It's entirely your choice.
Yeah, I have a question for you, Tom. So, what you're asking for us to do is to adopt both the urgency and the non-urgency. And if someone complains, then we just go to the non-urgency. But if, if there isn't a complaint, then we would just start 6:30 for our meetings. Does that, or did I not read that correctly, or?
No, you, you have, you can adopt either. You can also adopt both, because the urgency, if honored, will take precedence over the other. But if the council, it sounds, from what I'm hearing, that the council wants to come back to this. So what I would urge you to do is adopt urgency, but you can then announce, well, we're not going to implement, or whatever the council desires. That at least gives you the flexibility to move sooner if you want to move sooner. You adopt the ordinance, you're going to have to wait a while. Just the non-urgent ordinance.
All right, so I mean, really, that's, that's what, that's the council's pleasure. Do you want to start the 6:30 meetings at our next meeting? Or would you prefer to start the meetings in April at 6:30?
March.
I think the.
The March or the how?
It would be March.
Second meeting in March.
Sorry.
Yes.
It would be March or April. So, what's, what's your pleasure?
I would rather not use an urgency ordinance for this. I don't think it's an urgency issue.
I think it's beneficial to also have time to really inform the community, you know, maybe get it into two stars, for example, or, I don't know, it'll probably just be in one star. But to try to get it in quite a few blasts, so, you know, we have to, we have to notify the public of this change if we want them to continue staying engaged and showing up at the right time. So I think it's in the best interest of the public to give them time to kind of adjust, adjust to the new time as well.
All right, so we got two non-urgencies here. You guys feeling kind of the same way?
Absolutely. If we want to give the, the folks a six-week lead on this, to get people used to the new time and start thinking about, you know, what they need to do to come to a meeting, I'm, I'm for that. I'm fine.
Okay.
I would just add that, given Councilmember O'Connell's comments about what happens with the special meetings in closed sessions, it gives us an opportunity to prepare the public what will happen to those meetings.
Okay, all right. So, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the non-urgency ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. All right, item M, receive an update regarding the creation of potential council election districts. And I, so Jeremy, you want to start? Okay.
Yeah, it'd be a very, very brief start, just an introduction here of our two guests, Douglas Johnson and Justin Levitt, who are with, oh my gosh, title went ahead. Thank you, Andy C. Please, it's your floor.
So, good evening. It's on, okay. I'm Doug Johnson. You saw me by Zoom last June, I think it was. And so I'm here to, we're taking the next step of actually planning out the process that you gave direction back then to start. So I'm just here to say hello in person and to get to you. And then I'm going to hand off to Dr. Justin Levitt, who's going to be walking through the presentation and handling things day-to-day. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mayor Lenz, members of the council, members of the community, both here and on Zoom. My name is Dr. Justin Levitt with National Demographics. And I think what we're going to do tonight is just kind of present an overview of what the districting process looks like and some of the data and tools available as part of this process. And then kind of open it up for your questions about where we go from here. So, I've been told, okay, good, we're working. So, essentially, the state actually lays out some requirements in terms of a process for districting. And we also want to make sure to give the community enough time to learn about the process, know that it's going on, and have time to deliberate in any decision that's made at the end of the process. The first stage of the process is before any draft maps would be drawn. And during this stage, we have to hold two hearings at least within 30 days of each other. And tentatively, we have scheduled, or we're looking at scheduling those hearings for March and April. This would be within that 30-day window. As part of these two hearings, the goal is really to get feedback from the council and from the community about the communities of interest, neighborhoods, and other factors to consider during a districting process. And so as part of this, we'd want to hold a community forum as well, an opportunity to have a more discussion-oriented meeting with members of the public, so it wouldn't be a public hearing as the other two meetings would be. As part of these hearings, we would have tools, and we would present, and we'll show you some examples of these tools later, discuss the data we use, discuss the criteria, and answer questions about anything relating to the process. Following this stage, we're required to release any draft maps at least seven days before that hearing at which they're discussed. This gives the community and council time to look at the maps, you know, really focus on them, learn about them, study them before they have to make any comments at a public hearing. We would release these hearings at least a week before our third public hearing. On our schedule here, we've put that in May, on May 15th. So draft maps would be out by May 7th, 30th. Following that, there would be an opportunity for revision. We would also hope to do a community forum in late May or early June about the draft maps. Those would give an opportunity for members of the public to continue to submit new ideas, to revise the original draft maps from May 15th, and look at a second round on June 5th. Following this, we know the council takes some time off in the summer, and so we would want to come back in the fall, in September, to make the final selection on the map. This also provides plenty of time, you know, we're looking at the first elections not until 2026. So this gives us a lot of time to study the maps and really have a deliberative map at the end of this process. What would happen is that, following the adoption of a map, the first elections would be held in 2026, the second elections remaining three seats in 2028. And then in 2030, following the next census, the city would have an opportunity to redraw its district lines using the 2030 census data and every 10 years thereafter. We could also think of this as a rollout. I know one of the most frequent questions we get is about vacancies. And if there was a vacancy in a trustee or a district election, once that district has failed to elect a candidate, that, nothing would change in terms of the process, except for the member would have to reside within the district. So, I'm happy to address any other questions. Sorry.
That was unfair.
I'm sorry. So, I know we get a lot of questions about vacancies and what happens if no one runs. And I want to stress that that process for filling the vacancy doesn't change from what it currently is, just that the vacancy must be filled from that district.
So like an appointment.
Rather than from citywide, by appointment or special election. But it would only be within that district.
So, so by going through this process, what if our public says they don't want to go to district elections? Is that an option in this? And, I mean, you have it that we'll have a final adoption of maps in a process in September?
So, um, you know, we could talk about whether or not the city needs to go to district or wants to go to district. I know there was some interest in that from before the election, and that's why my, my Doug, Mr. Dr. Johnson was here presenting earlier in the year, last year. You know, I know that, I could just tell you that a lot of cities within San Mateo County have made the switch to district elections over the last 10, 15 years because of a law called the California Voting Rights Act. And that jurisdictions of any size are vulnerable to the California Voting Rights Act, even very small jurisdictions.
Just because we're going a little bit back to June. So, so what the council adopted in June was a resolution of intent to make the change. So that's why all this material is proceeding with that intent to change. You can change your mind. It doesn't say that might involve liability, and we'd want to meet with Tom in closed session on any potential liability. But yes, all this is laid out because you've adopted the intent to change. Doesn't mean you can't change your mind.
Thank you.
All right.
I have a question.
Do you still have, are you, are you finished with your presentation?
Oh, no, we, we saw.
Okay, well, why don't you keep on going, and then we'll, well, I don't know, I guess if, if councilmembers have.
If you have any questions.
No, no, I can wait, I can wait.
Okay.
Okay.
Very quick question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question has come up from constituents. Looking at the last election, there were no less than 10 different districts within San Mateo County that had candidates running unposed, and one city that scrambled because nobody wanted to run. I've been asked, and it would be maybe helpful to the public to hear the answer, in a city the size of Brisbane, is there a minimum number of districts that are required if you have district elections?
Five.
And how do you parse that out according to that law?
Sure. And I think we go here to the government code, which sets out that if a city has district elections, they have an option between five, seven, and nine council district. And.
It's in alignment, though, with the amount of seats, right? So if you have a five-member council, you have five districts.
That's right. And while some councils have expanded as a result of switching to districts, I don't know of any that have shrunk. So, the government code, I think, sets out five as a minimum number for seats, but allows for seven or nine. And I know Woodbridge, or Woodbridge, or down south, has seven districts, even though they are a very small community.
That, that's Woodside, California.
Woodside, sorry.
I think they used to have seven. They only, they have five now, they transitioned.
They transitioned.
Yeah. So if you wouldn't mind continuing with your presentation.
So, the, the law also lays out a set of criteria in the 2023 Fair Maps Act that cities follow when they're drawing districts. It divides them into different, ranks them in order of priority. In the first group, we have our federal laws, things that the Supreme Court and other federal courts have required. First and foremost is equal population. And this is that equal population by total population, not by registration, not by eligible voters, but everybody counted as part of the 2020 census. And we are required to use the latest census as part of this process. We do allow for some difference from perfect equality. There's a deviation up to 10% of a, up to 10% of a district's population, up or down, 5% in a single district, 10% overall. But we have to get more or less close to perfect equality. That's the one-person, one-vote principle. In addition, we have to follow the Federal Voting Rights Act. While we have, while race cannot be the only factor or the predominant factor in the creation of a district, we have to look at protected class communities, groups that have historically faced discrimination or barriers to registration and voting, and make sure that their rights are respected. This involves a more thorough analysis, really involving a lot of the criteria in the middle column as well. And into those middle columns, this is the new part in the Fair Maps Act, that these are now rank ordered, where they used to kind of be more of a balancing act. Now we have to look at them in this specific order. First, geographic contiguity. Districts have to have one outside boundary. We can't have a little bit of District One at the north end of the city and the south end of the city that are not physically connected to each other. Avoiding divisions of neighborhoods and communities of interest. This is something that during the first two hearings, we'll spend a lot more time on. But the law defines this broadly as areas with socioeconomic and geographic similarity should be kept together for the purpose of their fair and effective representation. You know, I guess, third, I'm sorry, it's avoiding, sorry, it shouldn't be those for cities and school districts. Fourth, easily identifiable boundaries. To the extent we can, we should follow major roads and other natural and man-made borders. And five, compactness, the law defines as not bypassing one group. natural and man-made borders. And five, compactness, the law defines as not bypassing one group of people to get to a more distant group of people, which is aimed at things like hooks and fingers. But these are rank-ordered. So if a community looks odd on the map, but we know that is a recognizable neighborhood or community, we have to keep that together first. In addition, the law has a prohibition on not adopting election districts for the purpose of favoring or disfavoring an incumbent political candidate or political party. So that's something that we can't take into account as we draw districts. And so these are the requirements. In addition, courts have recognized other principles. These can only be used as things like a balancing test between two equally good plans that meet all the requirements of the California Voting Rights Act and the Fair Maps Act. So these would be the rules we would follow in a districting. In addition, we have looked at the data for the city. I just, I get to the next slide.
There you go.
There we go. Okay, there we go. Looking at our total population, if we did four districts plus a mayor, we would have about 1,215 residents per district. With five districts, you'd have about 900 residents in each district. That is small for council districts, but that is what, about what you would be looking at per council district. As part of our voting rights analysis, we do look at our racial and ethnic makeup of the city. In particular, we look at citizen voting age population, the population over the age of 18 with U.S. citizenship. This is what the courts have often referred to as the eligible voter population. And so that's really the key in looking at our voting rights analysis. In addition, we also include a lot of other demographic information about the city, such as language spoken at home, renters and owners, breakdown of the income, and other factors that often contribute to understanding communities of interest. I like to say that these are not perfect understanding of your community, certainly no, doesn't supplant your local knowledge of where your neighborhoods are. But it can be really helpful to understanding the divisions and differences between parts of the city. We did do a little bit of a look, and this, you know, recognize some of these slides from the earlier presentation. We looked at where we have Asian and Latino population within the city, again, looking at that eligible voter population. And in particular, the areas in green, particularly in the Asian map, that area is between 50 and 65% Asian. And so in, on the hill, and then in the sort of apartments and condominiums of the new area of the city, is a majority Asian neighborhood. The areas that are in the purples and blues, those have lower percentages of the Asian or Latino population. And you can see on the Latino map, there is that big green block that actually has very few people in it. Same with the pink and yellow blocks across the freeway. Census blocks are geographic, so they incorporate all the area, even if there's only a handful of residents that live in one of those blocks. In addition to our presentations, we'll also have a number of tool options available for the city. One of the things we'll have is an interactive review map, sort of a Google Maps-style map, where you can zoom in, zoom out, and look at all the demographic information throughout the city. We'll also have a paper-based tools, first to draw your own neighborhoods or communities, as well as a tool to actually draw district lines as well. So we'll have population units and numbers for different areas of the city, and people will be able to add those together to come up with a district map of their own. This will allow residents to submit their own maps to the city. And so with that, this kind of overview of the process and what we need to look at in terms of the factors behind districting. And so we're happy to answer any questions about this process.
I have a question, not about the process, but I know at one point I knew the answer to this, but I forgot it already. If you run for a district, how long do you have to live in that district prior to running for office?
I want to check with the city attorney. It wouldn't change the current rule about how long you'd have to live in the city, would now just apply to the district.
Do we have a, do we, what's our, do we have a rule right now? What's our rule right now?
If you don't have a rule, it's just your residency voting requirement?
Okay.
And which in California is not long at all. I don't want to say I know the exact number, but it's a very short.
The real place, it's not usually that there's a pre-rule, it's that you have to live in the district when you file. So you'll have to live in the district, I think you file in July, somewhere around July for the, or August for the November election. That's really.
Thank you.
Unless you live in San Francisco, and then, you know, it's a joke.
Charter cities could do their own thing sometimes.
Cool, thanks.
All right. Madison, you have any other questions? All right. Tara, you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Colleen?
No.
Frank?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, with all due respect, my fellow council members, is this the presentation that you asked for tonight that was delivered? Is this the direction you gave staff to pursue this? I'm just curious.
Oh, this is an informative presentation, or item, that was directed by staff based upon direction that was given by council last year.
Got it, okay. And sorry, guys, I'm newly elected, this is only my second, so I'm just asking the questions.
Yeah, you know, part of the reason why it's before us now is that we didn't want to have confusion last year, because we could have went through the process, and then people think, okay, we're going to have district elections. No, there's a certain time period, and that would have just not been very fair to the public. So that's why it was delayed, and now we are having.
And it would have been rushed.
We, I guess we could have squeezed it in, and that would have been an extremely rushed process, and we didn't feel that that was fair to the community.
Okay. Also, from my understanding, this question's for Tom. Tom, are we in any violation of the California Voting Rights Act today?
Oh, that is a tough one, Frank, your council member. Bear with me, I'm going to say it this way. No city attorney with their salt is going to suggest that the city has done anything improper without actual evidence to that effect. So no, you are not in violation, as far as I am concerned. There are activist groups and some law firms who believe that a violation can be alleged on, on different grounds than certainly some others allege, and those folks would give you a contrary opinion. As far as I'm concerned, no. Also, I can speak for Michael, as far as he's concerned, no.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, my final question is, have we looked, I'm a prior resident of San Francisco, have we looked at alternative methodologies here, including ranked choice or cumulative or limited?
So, so first piece, to use any of the alternative voting systems, you have to be a charter city. I don't know if Brisbane is, or.
No.
No, we're not.
So you have to be a charter. You also need a county whose voting system can handle that. That's why there's so many of them concentrated in Alameda. And the other piece to note is that actually San Francisco and Oakland and San Leandro and Berkeley are all ranked-choice voting by district. So they're in districts, and then they just use ranked choice. Albany is the one who is ranked choice without it, but they're the first one. So you would have to be a charter city doing those under state law.
Got it. Thank you. That is all.
Sounds confusing.
Okay, I have some questions, but I think I'll wait until we hear from the public, and then, and then come back.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Mayor, before you move to public comment, just to, just a clarification comment, the, the schedule that's on page 46, or page two of three of the staff report, is illustrative. It is not meant to be anything other than that. It's just to show how it flows over a period of time. So March 20th is a, is a, is a date we picked?
We should not be putting this on our calendars.
Correct.
Thank you.
And, you know, per the, per the direction at the, at the front of the packet, it's an opportunity to, to hear from you, and whether this, this schedule makes sense, given the many other things that are happening in the city at this time. Thanks.
All right. So I'm going to open it up to the public. I have a couple slips here. So I'm going to start with Julie Sims. Julie?
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you for hearing from me on this issue. I just want to say, I love the intent of the CBRA. I think it has a lot of potential unintended consequences that could be really problematic for this city. I know we're a little bit in a, between a rock and a hard place, so I get why you're doing what you're doing. I've done a lot of research on this. But let me say, for a town of our size, I fundamentally worry about the consequences of creating district city council elections. I know how much it takes, how hard you work, and I'm just not sure for districts that are very small, we'd be able to find that kind of contribution in every district. And I also read a very troubling article based on a year's worth of study of this law. In the Chronicle, I want to quote from it. It said, "In some cases, the law has done what it was supposed to do. In many other towns, the CBRA has been ineffective, resulting in boards as white as they were before, or sometimes whiter. The CBRA is a blunt instrument without a precise test to separate valid claims from invalid ones." Goes on to say, "Fewer candidates are running for office in some towns, leading to canceled district elections and disenfranchised voters. In conservative pockets of California, the CBRA has boosted the fortunes of Christian and evangelicals and other hard-right candidates, helping them take over school boards and pass policies that restrict LGBTQ+ rights and ban books about race." I'm not saying that's going to happen here, but I find it problematic. And I think we need to think long and hard about this issue. I know you've been thinking about it, but I would really urge you to take a step back and not cave in prematurely. I would urge us to do the following, assess whether we have a CBRA violation at all. I know lawyers are coming after cities, and there's a financial penalty to that. But we're Brisbane. We've stood up to people before. We can do it again. I love the fight in this town. And let's fight where it matters. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Liz. I mean, Julie, sorry. All right, Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, lifelong Brisbane resident. I completely agree with everything that Julie said, and I am very against districting at this point for the city of Brisbane. I think it will do much more harm than it will do good. And I went and looked at the county website today about voting and population size and registered voters. Brisbane, there's only one city who has less registered voters than Brisbane, and that's Colma, at 824. Brisbane has currently 300, 3,090. And at the last election, there was 3,095 voters who cast 2,415 votes. And if you divided that by the number of council votes, there was approximately 2.02 votes per person for council where three seats were open. And I also looked at our map of our precincts. And there used to be three precincts in Brisbane, 5001, 5002, and 5003, and that was it. And I finally got the map on the county, and we now have seven precincts in Brisbane, some of them with nobody living them, in them at all, no, no voters. And also, you know, Brisbane is somewhere around, I think, 17 or 18 square miles. But land, if you go back to that one map they showed, land, Brisbane has less than four square miles. And districting, in this case, is difficult. And I wanted to see how each precinct voted, or what the participation rate was. We used to be able to kind of tell how many people from the ridge voted, how many people from, you know, Bay Shore voted, and how many people in old Brisbane voted. Well, now, they lumped everything together into one precinct for the results of the past election. And these five, seven precincts we now have are new. In the, in the last presidential election in 20, whatever year that was, 2020, we only had three precincts, and they were all listed. And now they're all combined in seven precincts. Without us even having any participation in that, and no data that shows how many people voted from each precinct. And I, I'm really concerned about that. And I'm also concerned about the data that was gathered. I've worked my entire career in marketing, and I have done a lot, a lot of demographic studies, and looked at a lot of demographic studies, and busted a lot of demographic studies. And just as one personal example, when I went to work for a company, Alden Lee Company in Palo Alto, and, you know, the, the owner's last name was Lee, and I walked in, and he's this tall, gray-haired, blue-eyed guy, and he goes, yeah, great-great-grandson of Robert E. Lee, not Asian. And there are many, many times, and then especially in this world now, where the communities are so mixed, and how do you, how are you identifying people as being Asian, or black, or, you know, where they're from, you know, Pacific Islanders? And, you know, is it self-reported data, or did you go in their household and ask them? And so I really questioned the data that I saw. Is it really accurate? Do you really know? Or are you making assumptions on what the population makeup is in Brisbane? And one of the things that really concerns me is that I really feel that this sort of mythic determination of ethnicity, or self-reported ethnicity, or whatever, I mean, you know, do I look like I have Native American in me? I do. Does Madison look like she's Latina? She is part Latina, big part, you know? And how do you know? And Cliff, you live in a household with Caucasian and Asian, you know, what, what, where do you fall in that picture? And where do people who are gay or trans fall in that picture? Because they are also part of the DEI group. And so I'm starting to think that with a town of Brisbane's size, this is more divisive and almost racist to do this, to try to put up these false walls in seven, even five districts. You take all the voters in Brisbane, the 3,090 voters that we currently have registered, and you divide that by five, it's 442 voters per district. If the vote counts on the last election did not make you stop and think, where there was 10 votes between number three and number four, and it took two or three weeks to figure out all those 10 votes, what are you going to be facing when you have five districts in a town like Brisbane, where we don't even have five neighborhoods? And I looked at this precinct map, and it was like all of Crocker Park, then there was an area that had nobody in it, and then there was, you know, that part of Brisbane, this part of Brisbane, central Brisbane, and Bay Shore, plus the Marina. And the Marina has voters in it, believe me. There, we have, we have people who live on their boats, where you now have liveaboards, and they vote, you know? So I think that this, pardon?
Give you a wrap-up, please.
Yeah, I, I will, sorry. I just think that this is extremely premature, and I attended those other meetings, but I don't remember you guys giving direction that we were gonna do districting. I, I heard that you were going to look at the data. And what I'm seeing is a whole lot of money being spent following this path, and it's like a runaway freight train. So please stop and think about this. Is this what you really voted for, that we were going to go to districts without hearing from most of the public? You just heard from the vocal few. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
You have a hand raised also.
Okay, so Chris, online?
I could be as eloquent as the last two speakers were on this point, but I'm not going to be able to impart because the agenda, the packet didn't include this presentation. So this is the first time I've had an opportunity to take a look at it. And like Michelle, I attended that meeting. I do not recall the city council voting to proceed on this. It was an agreement to get more data. And if I'm wrong, I would really appreciate, appreciate a note from staff telling me to look at which minutes recorded that decision. I, like Michelle, I have some serious concerns about this presentation. It was delivered with a little bit too much glee, quite frankly. And I'm suspicious of a map that includes all of that potentially speculative area of Brisbane, which exists in the bay. That land, that bay area is not going to be filled in with San Bruno Mountain, and that isn't land. So to even present that map. So to even present that map tells me that they don't understand this city, and I have serious doubts about their evaluation of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Can I ask a question of staff?
Yeah.
I mean, actually of the presenters. It's my understanding, because we've studied this in the subcommittee, that all the, all of the city's boundaries have to be included within, have to be a district, even if there's nobody living there, or no one will ever live there. You still have to include all of that land within the district anyway, within that map.
Yes, and, yeah, so there are many cities around the state, including San Francisco, that have to assign every single water piece of their county to a district.
Or like Golden Gate Park, for example, right?
Or Golden Gate Park.
It's never gonna have.
Every commercial building, every inch, square inch of the city has to be assigned to a district.
Right. Thanks.
All right. So now we're on to council discussion. So does anyone have any further questions for staff before we, we chat? I, I have some questions, so, but I, I want to, you know, open it up to all of you.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I have discussion, but...
Okay, so then, then let me, let me proceed then. So, Tom, I'm looking at the staff report, page 46. So at the top, it says, is this the first paragraph? "While no formal litigation threat demand letter has been received, given the spread of such letters in the county and across the state, it is likely one will be forthcoming. Acting before receiving such a letter will save the city up to $40,000 that state law says an attorney sending such a letter receives from the targeted jurisdiction." At, at the present time, we have not received a letter, correct?
We have received something in the interim, but it's not the letter that other cities have received. There was a oral threat from somebody involved in these actions months ago. Very recently, I believe it was Michael, but I did read it, we did get this sort of, you know, Brisbane's gonna be on the list or something, and it was the right people sending it? But no, did we get the form letter that they've been using up and down the peninsula? No, we have not received it, to my knowledge.
Okay. And I appreciate the response to Councilmember Kern's question. I, I feel the same way. But would you say that we, not that we're in the crosshairs, but we're potentially on the radar for potentially receiving one of these letters? Could that be a possibility?
Yeah, definitely. There's no doubt, yeah.
There, there's, okay.
It's been a very methodical process, and we're, you know, I doubt Colma's got one, I'm guessing. The smaller cities will probably be the last ones to do that, the smallest cities.
Okay. So if we did receive a letter, would we be obligated to pay the $40,000, or whatever the kind of the amount is? What, why would we have to pay? What's the, what's the legal process for that?
Yeah, forgive me for caveatting a bit here. So if we were discussing pending litigation or threatened litigation in closed session, we would talk about whether or not it's a credible way of avoiding the threatened litigation, and we'd also talk about whether the threatened litigation is credible itself. For a variety of reasons, as time goes by, the threat, the notion of whether the litigation is credible is diminishing, not, it is not going away, it's not minor, but it has diminished because of Sacramento and other folks. So yes, we would be talking about what is the, the best path for this city, given its budget and its means going forward, and that might very well lead to an agreement or authorization from the city council to, to pay. But it is a more complex discussion than it would have been a year ago.
Got it, got it.
Do I have a follow-up question? Based on what, on base on that?
Yeah, okay.
And Tom, isn't there like a shortened timeline then? Also, it's like 90 days or something versus?
That's right.
Doing it on your own, you can take more time and engage the public further?
Yeah, that's exactly right. And the, I, I, I don't, you know, we do not, Michael does not believe, I do not believe that if this was taken through the court, that Brisbane's violated anything. Other cities have decided not to do that. And there's, you know, there's a case that the plaintiff's lawyers are relying on, and you know, if I were in their business, and if I rely on it too, they believe in their cause, they believe in what they're doing. Those of us on this side believe it's, it's a, it's, it was a bad outcome, and it should be challenged. But then the question becomes, for every city, I can pay this and go through this process and be done with it, or I can spend a lot of money fighting it. This is, this is constitutional. This is voting rights. So you don't, you don't go into Superior Court and spend $100,000. You're gonna go every step of the way. So the cities that have paid it, totally understandable. But for those on, in your shoes, and Jeremy's shoes, and my shoes, Ingrid's shoes, as clear, none of us want to do it. It's just the balance of risk that cities are deciding. And one of them is the expedited period. That makes things more expensive, too.
And Tom, the, the, the cities that did challenge the letters, how successful were they?
After the first couple forays down that path, cities, to my knowledge, I'm not aware of a city that challenged after that point.
All right.
And these were larger, more, more financially robust cities in terms of funds in the bank that they could spend.
Yeah. I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe every city that did challenge lost in court and wound up having to pay significant amounts of money.
I don't, I don't know the amounts, but yes, there were adverse court decisions.
Okay, all right. Hmm. All right.
Yeah, I, I, I should, I want to be very clear. For the record, the, what policymakers were focused on a year ago is very different than what they're focused on now on this point. So that's why it becomes even a harder decision, because there's a chance that there's going to be a ballot fixed to this. But we don't know that yet. But that wasn't being discussed a year ago, right? A year and a half ago.
I have a, I have a question.
It's just, it's a tough, tough call. I, I don't want to make it sound like these other cities made a, you know, we'll pay them in cave. That's not what happened.
Ah.
If, if, if the council decides to move forward with something like this purely because of the threats and the cost, and prior to 2026, something changes within California, obviously we're seeing a lot of changes in the United States right now, especially related to these kinds of things. But if there is some kind of decision that's made in Superior Court with other cities and something changes, can the city change its mind and decide not to enact by the 2026 election, even if it's moved through process, already identified districts?
So it, the city could, the city could play this out to the last possible timeframe, and that way give it the most time, so it doesn't have to change its mind. But yes, if the process, the process has minimums, you must do this by, you must include these things while you're doing this, things like that. If those are perhaps spaced a bit, or otherwise more time is taken so that you don't get to that final decision, that would probably be the less expensive way to do it. But I'm not, I'm, I know the process, I'm not the expert the gentleman in the room are. They, they live and breathe it every day, I don't.
You know, Madison, if I want to, I want to follow up on your previous question about the flexibility that's given to the council. So if, if we did receive a letter, would we be on a, a fast-track process to engage the community, do the hearings, and then we would be, in a sense, forced to move forward with district elections?
As things stand now, that would probably be the course you chose, yes.
Okay. Whereas if we are proactive, like other cities have, city of Woodside, another small city, pretty much the same size as Brisbane, then we wouldn't get the letter. We could do a lengthy process, not overly lengthy, but in a reasonable amount of time, such as what is being laid out here before us. It gives us time to breathe, we don't have to have hearings during the summer, we can take the break and then come back. So moving forward with the process tonight doesn't mean that we're adopting an ordinance to move forward with district elections. We are just still in the gathering data process, correct?
I would call, I would like to hear from the experts on that. From where I sit, I would simply say that, yes, the sooner you are in a process, the more time you will have within the, within that process, because of the way the timelines currently work, as I understand it. But the gentleman in the room would know far better than I on that point.
Yes, please.
So you're right, and Tom's right. If, if you proceed now, you're on your own timeline. If you get a demand letter from somebody, most people talk about a 90-day timeline, but you've already adopted your resolution intent, the 90 days is run, so you would actually only have 45 days from when you get that letter. Now, the person who sends you a letter can give you more time, but your safe harbor would only be 45 days if they wanted to play hardball. We'd have to do everything that we just laid out, those five, five hearings and possible forums in 45 days, and adopt the ordinance. So that's the timeline pickle you get into if you wait for the letter. I would like to think the letter senders would give you more time, but some of them wouldn't, so.
They like their money.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's either you wait, you either go on your own timeline now and take as much time as you think appropriate, or you wait until you get a letter and you get stuck. The other piece, too, I was going to mention on the changing your mind, if, if you get a letter and they, you end up in court, even if you settle, then it's almost impossible to change your mind, because you have to go back to court. If you do this by ordinance and you change your mind, then you just have to go through the ordinance process.
You can revisit it.
Yeah.
So that's another way to keep, keep the initiative in your hands.
So, that's a great point.
So Tom, is, is this something that you would recommend discussing potential litigation in an open meeting at this point?
No, I'd rather it be in closed session.
Thank you.
Do you know, Doug, I have a question for you. Did you have a question? Okay, I just have a quick question, Doug. So you, you showed us the, the demographics, you, you, you laid out potential map. I guess it can't be the map, because you have to go through the process, so that, that map that you showed is just for example, but it wouldn't be a map.
They were just kind of tests of potential liability maps. They weren't proposed maps.
Exactly, exactly. So based upon your expertise and the information that's in the demographics of Brisbane, would there be a district potentially in the Northeast Ridge that would be the Northeast Ridge?
Dr. Lowry actually knows that better, and he's nodding yes, so, yeah.
Yeah.
These are wild questions.
Without getting into the specifics, there would be.
Okay, I just, just, that's, I like to know, thank you.
I feel, I actually feel uncomfortable about asking these kinds of questions.
I'm feeling really uncomfortable with this.
Given that, given, given what Tom has already said, I feel like these questions are questions that we should...
And I, I can clarify that the first step in this is just a paperwork thing where Dr. Lowry puts out a report saying, can you draw a majority in a minority district? So that's, we haven't drawn a map, we've just looked at the, the big picture.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I understand what you're saying. My concern is what is here in that first paragraph. I, I, you know, where it says that a formal litigation threat letter has, you know, has not been received, but there's the potential of that, and why would that be? So to me, it's a legitimate...
Well, we don't want to encourage any, we don't want to publicly say anything.
It isn't like they don't know, right? It's public, this is public information, and this was already presented at a previous meeting, and it's shown here tonight. These meetings are recorded. Everyone knows this information. Colleen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it might be beneficial at this time, I'm just gonna provide a little bit of big picture. In interaction I've had within the county with council members from other cities, there are cities that have districts and those that don't. Altruistically, this law was put in place to level the playing field. I don't think there's really a lot of opposition to that. The problem has been the implementation and the unintended consequences, as, thank you, Ms. Sims for pointing out. And from what I've been able to gather, talking to other council members, the large cities, it works really well. They've got a large population to draw from. The small cities, it's problematic. I mentioned 10 districts within San Mateo County, no opposition. And you might say, well, great, maybe a minority got in. That wasn't the case. It was a lot of white people. And sometimes it was an incumbent who wasn't white, but there was just no opposition, which you could say, that's fine, maybe people liked them, maybe they didn't. But what I learned in speaking with other people in the county is they feel that the unintended consequences are not working, and that this law needs to be amended to accommodate small-population cities. And there is a very growing movement in San Mateo to approach our state senator Becker and say, you need to deal with this, because it's not working. It's very, very difficult sometimes to get people to run, and especially if they have no idea what the time commitment is. And it's not going to necessarily promote good government. So I don't know that we have a choice of not moving ahead, because there's at least three attorneys in California who are making lots of money doing these lawsuits, and they're not going to stop. It's a matter of time before we get a letter. But I think it is prudent, as Councilmember Davis pointed out, to continue the process and see where we go. And perhaps enjoin in some discussions with other council members in the county, see what the effects have been, and see if we can come up with some ideas for amendments to approach our elected officials in Sacramento. Because we want this to work, but it doesn't work when you don't have enough people running, or if it's the same, the same mix without really taking into account these small groups that we want to see promoting them getting into office. So that's just a perspective. And as far as, Tom, as far as cities that have gone up against the letter, the most infamous was city of Santa Monica, who spent months and months, I think I brought this up back last year. I don't know where that's at, but I know city of Santa Monica won, then it went to the state Supreme Court, who didn't have the appetite to rule, sent it back to the District of Court, there were appeals, and the last I left off, I honestly can't give you a conclusive outcome, it was still tied up in court, and it's been at least two years. But they didn't win, they didn't lose, and it's kind of been a, a test marker. So I'm not telling you one way or the other, I'm just trying to provide you with information so you know what we're dealing with. Thank you.
Do you guys know where that's at?
Just to clarify, yes, so it's actually been eight years in Santa Monica?
Eight years?
And they have gone back, and the, they went back to the trial judge, who just decided to hold a new trial that's likely in November.
Wow.
So, yeah, it's, yeah. And Mayor, can I just clarify one thing for the record? The, the, one member of the public was concerned that we sounded too upbeat about this. I do want to just clarify that we're upbeat, because this is a really great city, and we're happy to be working with Brisbane. We actually work with jurisdictions making the change, and we do the work for the cities fighting the change. So we're, we're completely agnostic on whether...
You're a neutral party.
Whether or not you change is not up to us, we're just happy to be in Brisbane.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I think we've, we've talked this through. Is there still more discussion? Is there still more discussion that you would like to have? Frank, I guess you.
Yeah, I just have one final question. And Jeremy, we briefly touched on this earlier today. The calendar that you put together here, the schedule of events, it's roughly six months. Is this arbitrary? Did you just come up with this, or is this, is this actually, was this backed into somehow being a reasonable timeframe for us to, to take a look at this?
The start date is illustrative. The remainder is built on the schedule based on the law.
Got it. Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Given what we have on our calendar with, when, when do you think the quarry EIR is coming to us for evaluation?
At this point, my, this is a bit speculative, and I don't want to be held to a particular date, but it's looking like the summer.
The summer.
Yeah.
And then Baylands to follow.
Yes.
So then on this schedule, we would be kind of doing double duty on quarry, this and regular business.
There would be a lot happening at once.
Yeah. But, you know, the later this timeline starts, the more it can, it, the more it conflicts with, or is congruent with other big heavy items as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, through the chair, I don't think that there's going to be a perfectly ideal date to do this, given, you know, the load of things that the city's going to be working on in the next couple of years. So it's probably picking between lesser two, three, four evils.
do we want to move forward with the schedule? Because if we don't, then that responsibility is on us. And if we're okay with potentially getting a letter, then okay, then we accept that and the timeframe. Or we can move forward with the schedule in a reasonable amount of time. And if we want to have other discussions, if we want to have a closed session, things like that, then we can do those things. If we want to reach out to other cities and get input from them, we can do those things. When it comes to the end, that'll be the decision that we'll make. Do we move forward or not? Moving forward with the process doesn't mean that we are adopting those, adopting an ordinance for district elections. It means that we're going through this process, which is required by law. And so if we're good with that, then that should be the direction we give staff. So how, how do you all feel? Start with you, Madison.
I don't want to start.
Okay. Colleen, I'll start with you.
I wanted to clarify one other thing relating to what I said previously. One of the things I heard from other cities, smaller cities impacted by this, was not necessarily asking for an amendment to give a pass to smaller cities to not have districts. What they were talking to me about is that they were considering the idea of smaller cities might have two districts or three, and that population would, would provide different criteria that might make more sense, rather than saying five districts in a city that has a population under 6,000. So I just wanted to clarify that. I think considering the, the workload, I, I don't, I don't see a problem with, with setting a month and date as a target for when we would start this process. So I think it, it, looking at, I don't know whether this illustrative timeline is absolutely the normal time span between each of those dates, or if that's just kind of pie in the Because I think it would be challenging to start in March and get done with this with a summer break, and then also have the quarry hitting all at the same time. I don't, I don't even see how you could do it. So I, I, I would like to see the council maybe consider just not saying, okay, next month we start, but thinking about, should it be April? Should it be May? Should it be August? I don't have the answer to that, but I, I think that's one possibility, that we set the timeframe when we realistically think staff can absorb this, that we can find time in the schedule to do it justice. And, I mean, this is also a pressure on our staff to put this together, as well as these two gentlemen. So I don't think that it's, it's necessarily a bad thing to say, this is the month we want to start it, and we are moving forward. We are moving forward, and this is when we are going to start the process.
Yeah, Jeremy?
Yeah, through the chair, Doug is obviously the expert here. I, I understand there is some flexibility in how you construct your schedule, particularly towards the end of it, but I think there's some things up front that, that are a little more structured. Would you provide that information?
So, yeah, part of what's making this timeline longer is the break, the August break that you take. So we didn't want to rush the end of it and cram it in right before you go on break and feel like you had a deadline. But yes, it, it's flexible. As we talked about last May or June, the registrar really wants this done by March or April of next year at the latest, if you're going to do it for the next year's election. Statutory, you do have until July, but that gives registrars heart attacks and makes them nervous. So if you're looking at pushing back the start, have in the back of your mind, we really have to finish by end of March, early April. You could, as Justin laid out, there's the first phase with the informational hearings, you could do those before your summer break and, and do the quarry, take care of the quarry and come back to this in October, you know, then you kind of get the process going. People can play around with maps and then come back, and you can actually talk maps after you finish the quarry. I'm hoping you'll finish the quarry by October, November, I don't know.
We are, all are, yes.
Yes. So that is a possibility. You can, there's that one point between the first set of hearings and the second set of hearings where you can kind of take a break, and, and the residents can go off and spend that time drawing maps with the tools that Justin talked about. It doesn't really hurt the process. If you wait to start until November, then you're going to cramp your timeline, getting it done in time, in time for April. Does that help?
If we want to get it for the 2026 election. Correct.
My concern is that I can see the advantages of starting a process a little bit later in the year, but I also see concerns, I also have concerns with that because then you're just really ensuring that everything's happening at the same time. If you're starting your process when we're starting.
How often does that happen?
When we're starting the quarry, and then, let's say the quarry goes fast, which it won't, but it, let's say it does, then you just, Baylands is right behind. It's a lot on the community as well at once because, you know, we're asking for lots of feedback about a lot of things, complex issues that affect, will greatly affect this town. This will greatly affect Brisbane. The quarry will greatly affect Brisbane. Baylands will greatly affect Brisbane, and we want as many people as possible to show up and like give input on those things, not to mention all the, just the daily things that we'll do, like impact fees, and anything we have on our agenda. We want that, we want that input from our constituents. To have three very heavy-duty subject matters within a short timeframe, I think, is a little bit exhaustive of our community. So I think maybe it perhaps makes sense to start it earlier.
What is earlier to you?
This timeline.
Jeremy.
Like, I don't see the advantages of starting it like in September, when we know seems to be when.
Jeremy, you have, you have more of a handle on scheduling and things like that than any of us do because you're dealing with staff very closely. If we moved out the start date a little bit later, would that be better, or does it really matter, just leave the March 20th date?
Again, a little bit of guesswork on my part. I'd like to start actually with, you know, the Baylands project, you know, that, that EIR anticipating early in the spring. We're anticipating the EIR early in the spring.
Late spring?
Correct.
So before the?
It's going to be in this, yeah, in March, April timeframe.
That's not what I was going to do.
That, I suspect that we're going to be looking at a little different calendar for EIR comments, given the gravity and the, how significant that project is.
Yes.
So again, I don't want to speculate on exactly the time, but probably something longer than what we did with the, with the quarry.
Yes.
That likely takes you through the summer from an EIR comment period. Those then come back, and then there's a number, there's quite a bit of staff work that takes place, given the quality of the comments as they relate to the EIR, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that takes some time to respond. So you can add, you know, at the end of that, another three, four months, five months potentially. So we could be very quickly into 2025 on that kind of schedule.
We're in 2025.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, 26.
Okay, so is, then is the March 20th date better?
I, I'm not sure there's functionally much difference between a month here.
Okay, all right, just, just asking. Okay.
Question, if I may?
Yes.
So we have the hearing and final adoption here as September 4th, and then I'm hearing that we've got about six months after that until the registrar needs this information. What happens in that time period between September 4th and, call it, March of 2026?
So the advantage is of finishing sooner is your potential candidates know the map. So once you adopt, then potential candidates and the people.
Can move.
Go recruit them. Could, well, it could go, that's possible.
I'll need to.
But also decide if they want to run. If you don't give them a map until April, then they only have a couple of months to decide if they're going to run and engage support and that kind of thing. So it gives your candidates more time. On our side, we work with the county registrar to implement it, and if we're doing it in September, that's a lot easier than, well, this county's almost done. But there's usually a rush every March or April where a whole bunch of jurisdictions are approaching the registrar and saying, hey, we have to draw our lines. But the main, we can handle that. The main impact is your candidates having more time to decide if they want to run and get organized.
Thank you. Comments, Jeremy?
Thank you.
Well, I will say that if you only have 900 voters or 600 voters in your district, it's not going to take you as long to formulate if you want to run or not. The, the question really is going to be, and my comment is on the slide with what, you know, what regulations we have to take in, into account when drawing a map is not dissecting a community, and having district elections is going to dissect our community. It is going to take away any feeling of continuity within Brisbane that we currently have, and it is going to destroy, absolutely destroy, the way we think about our neighbors and think about our political cohesiveness. So whether we started in March or, or September, or next year, or next 10 years, it is going to be very divisive for our government, for our people, and I'm totally against it. I think that, I, I know that Governor Newsom has been looking at making some changes to this. Whether he's successful or not, I don't know, but personally, you know, I guess we just need to bite the bullet and get it over with, but I think it's going, it's a terrible idea, and it'll be totally divisive to Brisbane in its entirety. It won't be affecting me except for who I can vote for, and, and it will limit my possibilities of who I can vote for. I can't pick the best person running. I'm limited to picking one person, maybe two people. And, and that's just not going to be fair to the people of Brisbane. We should be able to pick who's the best candidate for us, not because they live closest to us. And, you know, that's my thoughts, and as far as giving direction to staff on when they can set the meetings, they have to make that decision, it's not really us.
Okay, all right. Colleen?
I have no more to say, thank you.
Okay. Madison? Good. All right, Frank? Okay, so Jeremy, obviously this is informative item. Tom, do you want us to have a motion, or we just get, we've given direction and we move on to the next item?
Can we have a closed session about this?
I, I was going, through the chair, I was going to recommend that at our next council meeting, we have a closed session. I think that that's, I think that would be a good idea in order to answer any other questions that there might be, or the council on this. So I just want to make sure that I understand the direction. I'm not getting direction on a particular date, I'm getting direction to move forward as appropriate based on our needs. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
There's also a hand raised.
I, you know, sorry, if you, if it's really brief from the person online.
Christine.
Christine, 30 seconds, please.
Okay, just got the unmute button. Actually, you saved me from actually having to comment because I was concerned that we were about to make a decision that was not on the agenda, and so I appreciate the action that you're taking.
All right, thank you, Christine. All right.
You hadn't closed public comment.
I don't, I don't think we needed to close the, the public comment. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to new business. Discuss fiscal year 2026 congressional appropriation request. So staff report, please.
Mayor Lentz, members of the council, thank you. This is the first time I believe the council's had this opportunity to have this kind of conversation, so I'm, I'm excited to be part of it tonight. As you know, on an annual basis, Congressman Kevin Mullen's office provides for appropriations for communities in the district. As illustrated in the attachment from last year, you can see that there were a variety of projects that the congressman was able to secure funding for. There are a variety of different types of projects. What we wanted to do tonight was to hear from you on the types of things that you might be interested in staff exploring, that we could bring back as a project or, or a number of projects that you could make an ultimate decision on. In the staff report, page 60 or page one of two, you can see just some of the, this was just a summary of the things that were behind this in the, in the attachments. We don't have guidance yet from the federal government, so that does make things some challenging, and that's why in part, we thought, in addition to getting public comment and having a little bit of a process here, that it made some sense to not focus on some specificity and perhaps focus on general, general areas. So you can see that those areas are listed in the, the attachment. So I'm very excited to hear the council's direction tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may? I have, I have a question, Jeremy. Is there a deadline for submitting proposals to Congressman Mullen?
Yeah, in March, they open up the portal. There's not a date yet assigned, but that's typically closed towards the end of March. So we only have a few weeks to submit, to prepare something for submittal, and then there's a shorter period of time to actually submit.
Okay. Since the council has been notified of an upcoming meeting in March that is priority setting, wouldn't this be appropriate to discuss at that time?
It would be, but it's likely to be a little too late. We may not have enough time to, to turn that around, given I don't know when Mr. Mullen's office is going to be closing that portal. Having talked to his district director, it could be right around that time.
Can we find out, and if necessary, move up our priority-setting meeting? Because it seems like that's the place we should really be talking about it.
That, that's the council's decision.
I don't know that my schedule allows that kind of flexibility to just.
I'm sorry, can't hear you?
I don't know that my schedule allows like that level of flexibility, like to, can we maybe, does staff have some suggestions for projects that they think would get approved? That they know that the council has expressed interest in? We've heard a project suggested this evening, but.
Staff concurs with the comments that were made tonight from the perspective that we believe that the community center is very ripe for acquiring funds. And for what it's worth, staff would fully support a recommendation from the council to explore that.
Can, to follow up, can we, in our proposal, ask for funds to? Can, to follow up, can we, in our proposal, ask for funds to, um, repair something like the roof, but then also perhaps, uh, be allocated for, you know, um,
Programming.
interior, interior, if there's...
Elevator.
Or some type of, um, community, community outreach, feedback session, interior rehabilitation, even though we know the roof is a problem, but we may not know exactly what we want to do with the space. Can we still try to get funds that we could then use, once the community has decided what it wants it to be?
Absolutely. Um, I point to page 65, it's the attachment one. There's an example, um, the San Francisco Visitation Valley Family Center improvements. I think it's somewhat, um, apples to apples here. I do want to, um, enter in the record that, um, the most significant, um, modification or upgrade to the building is ADA compliance related to an elevator. That is why the upper story is not available right now. Um, and, um, to, this is totally back of the envelope. This was Ask Randy, give me something. Um, he thought it was in the range of $1 to $2 million to address all of the issues, bring the building up to, all the things that we need to do, and make it a wonderful place outside of a use conversation. Um, clearly, there would need to be some decisions later on about where you're gonna put walls and things of that ilk, but that's the, I think that's the broad community engagement that, that certainly the community is indicating they'd like to have.
I happen to know that that roof leaks very badly, like horribly.
Oh, you guys are gonna be part of that facility's subcommittee?
That's right. Colleen and I.
Colleen, okay, yeah. So, thank you for addressing that.
I do feel that that also is in alignment with what's been expressed by several council members over the last year, which is that the city should be focusing on ways that it can maintain our existing facilities.
Yes.
Rather than putting money into new and shiny things, but how to, you know, take care of what we already have, and those things that maybe aren't flashy fun projects, but are ne- very much necessary.
This could be, uh,
Could be a fun.
Fun project. I don't say flashy, but obviously if that space is utilized. You know, I, I will just add that, uh, Jeremy and I had a meeting with Mario, Congressman Mullen's, um, staff member, and he shared this portal information with us, and that community centers were items that the current majority would most likely fund, right? You have to be strategic about what asks you present. Put out something that the majority is not really interested in, probably not gonna get the money. Put for something that they are interested in, then you stand a better chance. So...
Through the chair, um, I think, um, oh, my train of thought went out of the head. It'll come back in a minute. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, a question. Staff report indicates a 20% match from the city on anything that is funded?
That's correct.
Second question is then, when making proposal, proposals to Mullen, will they take more than one proposal? Because I understand the, the maintenance of existing buildings, but I, I can't help but recall a recent council meeting talking about the storm drains backing up at Sierra Point and the potable water supply being compromised, and would it be possible to actually submit a proposal for each in that if they don't like one, we've got another one? Maybe they'll like one, or they'll like the other, and they're both pretty big priorities.
All right. Um, I believe you can. I don't believe, um, I believe you can.
San Francisco put for two.
Yeah.
But that was the only one that I saw, and I...
Uh, Burlingame did two. You know, Burlingame's got a couple, too, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
May I?
Yes.
And so, a question to staff. Um, we can ask for a dollar amount. It does not mean we're getting that dollar amount. True statement?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is it all or nothing, though? Will they say, like, we can't fund that, but we'll fund, we can't fund $2 million, but we could fund one, or is it...
It's somewhat arbitrary. There, it is not a transparent process, um, so you kind of...
Does the city have to match a certain amount of funds?
City has to match 20%.
All right. So Jeremy, do you feel you have, uh, sufficient information from us?
I will ask the confirming question. Is the council interested in us coming back with, um, with the next meeting, something related to the community center?
Seems like...
Yes, unless you think that there is a secondary project, we should also, like, consider or submit.
Well, I, I think staff would, would, would know what those projects would be.
If there's...
But do we want to see something, a secondary project?
Through the chair, if there's an area of interest, the, the staff can explore what those projects might be. So if there's sort of a, um, yeah, if there's a topic that, or, or, an area of interest, please let me know. Um, could be other community center-related things. It could be utility, like last year, we got money for the pump. Um, could be various things.
I would say, like, sewer and drainage, don't we, haven't we identified, like, areas at the marina that are gonna be heavily impacted by that very soon? So would that be like a...
But I'm not sure there's any shovel-ready project that we could list that we're looking for a dollar amount for that. Um, you know, right now, we're still in the study process with sea level rise, and some of the issues that are gonna, um, come from that. So I'm pretty sure that he's looking for sort of shovel-ready kinds of ideas rather than aspirational goals.
If I may? I, I, Terry, I, I think that from that report we had, and when Randy was talking about, um, timeframes at the marina, he kind of had it scoped out what has to be done, the most urgent, because remember, it was in stages, and the most urgent one was those storm drains. And beyond that was the potable water, because that could be compromised same time, so...
No, the storm drains were, but I don't think there was really a project definitive yet. I could be wrong.
I, I would, I would ask him, because that, and, and the other thing, if you're asking about other projects, when I saw street and highway safety improvements, for at least four years, we've been talking about Bay Shore, and cars going 70 miles an hour with, which I saw the other day, people walking by the side of the road, and bicycles trying to navigate. And I saw on a complete streets work plan that they're to look at how to deal with the parking situation at the mobile home park, and those are all related, and we've never had money to deal with Bay Shore, and traffic calming improvements. So that would be one other area, potentially, to just bring up to staff?
Be happy to, if that's the pleasure of the council.
Can we, when we submit these, say a priority one, priority two project, or... Because like, in my mind, I would say...
I doubt it. I, I don't know definitively, but I doubt it.
Wouldn't Mullen's office give you suggestions of what they think is feasible?
Yeah, they, they'll be helping with the guidance.
So it seems that their feedback is, is extremely important.
Yeah, and I think issuance, when we get issuance of the FY26 guidance, you know, we'll have some sense of where things are going, and that could, that could alter things, but the timing of this makes it difficult to have that conversation. So if it, um, what I will do is I'll have a further conversation with Mario. Uh, I talked to him about a week ago, and he did not have a date for opening. Um, so I will ask again, um, and, um, see if we can time this a little bit in March, perhaps. Uh, it doesn't, it isn't necessary to come back to the next meeting. I was just trying to move it along, but we might have some flexibility at the meetings in March.
Okay, great. All right, so I think we could...
May I add one more thing? So a couple of constituents have approached me about the stability of the land on the backside of San Bruno Avenue. Um, it would be on the west side of the street, and it appears anytime we get rain, more and more of that earth washes into the road, and people have been questioning me about the stability, and is anybody looking at that? So not a shovel-ready project, but also I don't think a terribly complex project either.
We'll take a look at it, then. Thank you.
I think that some of those areas on San Bruno, we already addressed with the landslide, and we're waiting on some FEMA money, or on Caltrain money, or something like that. But there are some areas there that were affected from the landslides, from the storms of 2022, and, uh, some of those projects are still ongoing and waiting for their funding from the, I think it's Caltrain, Caltrans. Anyway.
Good to know. Thank you, council.
All right, moving on to staff report. City managers report city updates and upcoming activities. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor Lentz, members of the council. We have a lot of things coming up in the next month, starting this weekend. Habitat Restoration Day is at 9:30. Artist's Evening of the Stars is at 7:30. It's a great weekend. The mayor's going to have office hours. We've moved your office hours. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
We did move it to April, I mean, excuse me, geez, to February, uh, what was it, 18th?
February 18th.
And it's gonna be at the library.
Correct.
From 6 to 7.
Thank you. Um, the, uh, North County Fire Authority will be holding its, uh, monthly emergency prep meeting on February 25th. Uh, the one that they held last month had about 30 people attend. It was fantastic, and, uh, the fire, uh, the authorities committed to continue that. On the 28th, um, in the morning, uh, coffee with me, if you'd like to come visit, um, at the annex, um, 8 to 9 a.m. Then in March, um, two previously announced, uh, significant, um, efforts on the city. Uh, we'll be starting our B of A outreach on that site on March 8th. That'll be at the library. Um, there will be subsequent events after that, including, um, onsite opportunities, council priority session on March 22nd. I think we've said that it'll be here at, at City Hall, but, um, gonna work with the mayor and the council to see if that's the appropriate site for that. The comm survey to the community, communication surveys out. Um, we are excited to have received, uh, the answers so far. We're eager to hear, uh, more input. Um, to that end, Caroline has been printing copies and placing them in locations in town to increase the ability for people to participate in that process. A reminder, um, that the council, um, is going to be holding committee and commission interviews next week, February 11th and 12th, from 6 to 8 in the annex. I have good news. Uh, the state AARP has certified our age-friendly plan, so that's fantastic. Um, and, um, just to, for the public, I've shared this with the, the council. Starting at the next council meeting, if you look at the agenda on item Q, we're gonna add additional, um, detail to, to this. We'll be listing the subcommittees that had met in the period between council meetings, so, um, residents know, um, that at, at this part of the agenda, we'll be listing future, um, subcommittee meetings, which will allow the council to provide direction to the subcommittees on those issues that are coming up. There's a number of subcommittees, meetings that are gonna be happening, starting in March, um, and, um, an opportunity to discuss any other, um, subcommittee needs. Um, so that's a transparency opportunity for the public. That's my report. Thanks.
All right. Um, all right. So mayor council matters, item F, appoint council members to the Caltrain Local Policymaker Group. So staff report, please.
Thank you. Sorry about that. The, um, Caltrain Local Policymakers Group has existed since 2012. Uh, the council, in its, um, last meetings, um, staff inadvertently left out an opportunity for council to appoint members to that advisory body. Tonight, we'd, um, like to hear recommendations for who will be representing the city at that body. Thank you.
All right. So, Terry, you were the representative. I was the alternate. We, yeah, so, um, yeah.
Well, we, I, I was, I attended the local policymaker group meetings for quite a while, um, after everybody else said they were a waste of time, the other council members who had attended. Um, and...
Oh, I remember that.
And so I...
Those were the exact words, Terry.
They were.
Yeah, oh, they were. They were.
Um, the poli- the, the local politi- policymakers group is a group that has no, they're informational only, and so they have no, um, powers to do anything. Um, basically, it is a mix of Caltrain and High Speed Rail that talk about, for the most part, it was about electrification and High Speed Rail and their milestones. Um, and it was interesting to a degree. Most of their work in the last couple of years have been around, um, pandemic, um, back, backlash of what happened in the pandemic, when they didn't have any ridership, and they didn't have any farebox revenue, um, and getting people back on Caltrain, and doing their electrification, but informational only. And then they also did quite a bit of work with toolboxing on at-grade cock crossings, which is, you know, a big thing for everyone else in the county, but we have no at-grade crossings. So that is the predominance of what the work that they'd been doing. When we went into the lawsuit with High Speed Rail, I was advised to, um, not participate in the meetings. I could certainly go to the meetings, but to not participate. And it was really difficult to go and listen to what High Speed Rail was saying publicly, which didn't seem appropriate to me, what they were saying, and just to keep my mouth shut. So I quit attending. Um, they also don't allow remote participation, so it's a drive down to San Carlos for a meeting where you just need to be a bump of the log. I'm happy to give that committee up and not attend those meetings, but if anyone else is interested in driving to San Carlos for a meeting...
How, how about this, Terry? What if the meetings were Zoom only? And, and would you be willing to serve if, if they were Zoom meetings?
Do you know something you would like to share?
I, I just think that they are, uh, because I'm the alternate, so I get the information. So I believe that they are Zoomed.
We gotta unmute ourselves right now, because we are muted. There we go.
So what do you think, Terry? If it's Zoom, you, uh, be our representative?
I, I, I think I've, I've done my time on it. I'd rather someone else took it over.
Yeah, yeah. Frank?
I'll take it over.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, yeah, no, it's, it's important.
If it's not Zoom, though, then what? Does this come back to, for discussion? Are you taking it on the pretense that it's Zoom?
Well, I should ask that question. When are the meetings?
Thursday nights.
Okay.
Once a month?
It says every other month.
Okay.
Is it every other month?
I thought it was every month.
Because it says every other month on the thing.
They might have changed it because they couldn't get enough participation.
Where did it go? Where did it go?
I don't think it's on that list.
It's on the second page.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's at the, here. Fourth Thursday, every other month.
Five thirty.
It seemed more often than that to me, but... Sorry, it wasn't one of my favorite things, but they did occasionally have sandwiches. Oh, no, no, that was C-Keg. Never mind.
Wow.
Well, if it's Zoom only, doesn't really matter.
It's, that, this is true.
Then you watch other people eating sandwiches.
Yeah.
Anyway.
We'll make it work, one way or the other.
Do you know if it's Zoom only?
All right.
Uh, uh, as far as I know, it's not a Brown Act body, so I don't know why they couldn't utilize Zoom more, but I, I don't know specifically.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll still stay as the alternate in case, uh, you have an issue. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. Does, Colin, do you have a PCE?
Oh, yes, I do.
I know you do.
A reminder that PCE launched a new website. Everyone's encouraged to check it out. Website's been enhanced, has tons of new subheadings and information that was never there before. The in-house customer service center was launched in conjunction with Turnkey Upgrade Service. That's what they're calling, um, new service. You call if you're considering changing out a major gas appliance to more efficient, and I'm... and I might add money-saving electric ones. The new ones are way cheaper than the gas ones, contrary to what people try to tell you, gas is cheaper. That would be like furnace, water heater, stove. You're eligible for a free home upgrade in-person assessment of your home. I mentioned that last month. I'm going to mention it again because not everybody might have been listening to that meeting. If you're considering heat pump HVAC or heat pump water heater, the complimentary evaluation will help demystify the technology and the process. You'll learn what's feasible in your home and what it will cost. You'll learn how much you can save with new energy-efficient appliances. And PCE will even provide you with a list of vetted contractors who actually have experience installing these new heat pump appliances. You want someone who knows what they're doing. It will cost you less if they know what they're doing. Rate affordability is still number one concern of PCE. Since the Bay Area has some of the highest electric rates in the country, the board gave PCE staff a mandate to explore all avenues to further discount rates to customers. And as PCE continues to find new sources of clean energy and constantly signing new contracts, this is to ensure more cost-effective, reliable electricity. And I would just add extemporaneously, do not be surprised if PCE electric rates drop this year. While PG&E may be going up, PCE will probably be going down. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Mackin. Frank, you had a.
Yes. Update. I had my first JPA for the San Mateo County Library. Happy to report that we took a hard look at their five-year strategic plan. It looks like it's in pretty good shape. We approved the purchase of a brand-new bookmobile. Our current bookmobile's about 15 years old and is becoming a little bit dilapidated. This bookmobile does serve our more rural areas in San Mateo County. I'm happy to report we are going to be getting a hybrid diesel, pretty technologically advanced vehicle that children and adults can actually still get on. And that's a pretty exciting and pretty critical component of that. And the new vehicle will not require a commercial driver's license, which was a big Achilles' heel for us. And lastly, the mid-year report was presented and expenses are below plan and revenues are above plan, so they're in a super solid position. That is all.
Yeah, that's great to hear. Thank you. All right, and you also attended the new council members, Lead California Cities Conference down in LA?
I did, down in Garden Grove. I did attend the new council member workshops down in Garden Grove. Pretty intensive, three days of workshops totaling about 20 hours and giving continuing education credits of about four hours. So it was intense and very, very good. Got to meet a lot of folks from other cities. One day was kind of fun. They sat us for lunch by population of the city we were from, so we got to spend time with some other smaller communities, which was great.
Yeah, great. Yeah, and I also attended, too. There was a mayor's portion of that, and I hadn't been to one in, I don't know, at least a decade. So it was nice to go down there.
Yep.
Yeah. Anybody else?
You want me to?
Can I start?
Go ahead. Well, maybe I should start with the one you didn't attend.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So Public Art Advisory Committee, we met in December. I feel like I reported out on this, but it's on this paper, so I'll say it anyway. We met with Nine Dot Arts to look at draft portions of the plan, things that the Public Art Committee could accomplish in one to three years, four to six years, and seven to 10 years, and just agreeing on what those priorities are so that we can figure out how to accomplish them. But it was nice to kind of see different timelines for different things. And they suggested things that we, you know, had never, like, really considered. So anyway, then we also, one of the things that we looked at with the plan was, and this might have been at another prior meeting, too, but I'll say it anyway because it all has to do with the plan. It outlines the process of how public art is funded. Because a lot of people don't know, developers might not know, community members might not know. So it shows, like, when something moves through the Public Art Committee, when some, what the process looks like, if it's a developer that's funding a project. And then they also suggested another option, which is if a developer is choosing to fund a project, but they want to work closely with the Public Art Committee on that process. So they kind of suggested, like, an alternative way to bring public art forth that we don't actually have established right now. And that would be if the Public Art Committee had the time in their schedule to work more closely with the developer. And I'll turn it over to Terry to talk about our latest meeting, which is about the stairway project.
So I just wanted to kick it off because I had my first public art subcommittee meeting. And I think that it was very interesting to see the collaboration and how the process moves forward. The project before us is the stairway walkway. And not only did they look at the public art factor, but how it could align with the entrance from the street, what the possibilities and the problems could be from the entrance to the street. So they looked at it a very holistic way. And so that was, I thought, very good that they did that and looked at it in that way. So it wasn't just focused on the art or on the installation. It was more holistically on how it would work with the community. It has issues. It's adjacent to a couple of property owners. One of the property owners did chime in at the meeting as far as, well, is the lighting going to affect me? Is it not going to affect me? Are we going to be trespassing or are people going to be knocking on somebody's door because the art is too close to their property? So I thought that was very good and it was great to come in. You know, I'm coming in certainly well after the fact when the artists have been established, but still to see the way they are working with the artist and working with the community to make sure that it's all integrated.
I'll just add that both the artists were there. So this is the first time that we've met them in person. We went, met one of the artists via Zoom. But they, one of the artists actually brought some samples. And that was samples of possible lighting, samples of railing. And so we were able to look at them, drill them, talk about how they would be coated, the color. And then we also looked at more of the mosaicist, her portfolio. She shared other pieces that she had done. And so we talked about, when she initially submitted, obviously, it's just, like, more conceptual. But we got a little bit more into discussing, like, the details of what her piece would look like. And it was interesting to see, like, those two talk to each other about, let's say, if there's something happening within the mosaic that possibly that's reflected in the lighting. For example, the lighting would likely be flora from San Bruno Mountain. And so if there are certain plants, for example, that are in the mosaic, then maybe the light that's there is a corresponding, similar, the same kind of plant or the same kind of flower. Might be a poppy in the mosaic at that part in the stairs, and the flower is also a poppy. So we're really excited to see the collaboration that will occur between these two artists. And also them considering the color palette of, like, the color palette of the mosaic will inform the color palette of the metalwork. So I think all of us were really, really excited about that.
Yeah, I can see why you would be excited.
It's going to be great.
Yeah.
So then I also had a San Francisco Roundtable meeting last night and dodged a bullet. I was not elected chair, which was my goal in the evening. I do retain the vice chair position.
How did that piece about the cup half-full?
Well, I didn't want to be the chair, so luckily that didn't happen. So but one of the things that has been really good about the SFO Roundtable in the last year is we've really gotten the help of the FAA. They have been attending meetings. They've been opening up. They've been sharing solutions with us. And unfortunately, due to the difficulties surrounding the current administration, they had to cancel their program, their discussion topics for last night. They could not attend, comment, or interact with the roundtable at this time.
Whoa. What was the topic?
They were going to be talking about advanced air mobility, so drones and vertical takeoff vehicles. But they can no longer attend our meetings under the current administration at the moment. So that's going to be a big hurdle when we cannot engage with air traffic controllers or the FAA in any way at the current moment. We will see how that changes. And talking with the rest of the cities and counties that were there and the administrative people who were at this meeting, we're all sort of under this impression that California's going to be on their own for a while. And we'll have to wait and see how that plays out. But it's a really scary situation for all the leadership in the county and the state at this moment to see how that's all going to play out.
May I ask you a question, please?
Of course.
Those delivery drones that we've heard about and also the air taxis, are those flying under 200 feet? Do you have any idea? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, just in light of recent events.
Well, certainly, certainly they'll be taking off and taking off and landing under 200 feet because obviously they start on the ground. There is a symposium that's going to be happening, and I have the date written down on another piece of paper, in the next month. That's a noise symposium that should be very helpful. And one of the leaders on the topics of planning for the air mobility and for cities to be able to protect themselves are going to be speakers, keynote speakers at this. I'm hoping to attend that symposium. You can do it virtually or in person. It's at UC Davis. So I'm hoping to look into that. But I think that when I talked with our staff about some of the advanced air mobility helicopter pads, basically, or vertical takeoff and landing, we are planning ordinances that we have in place are prohibitive. Things are prohibited unless they're specifically allowed. And they are not saying that they are specifically allowed under Brisbane Building Code. So that means that they would be conditional to being permissive use. So we are a little bit protected at the beginning for the air mobility being in our airspace because we will have the right to say yea or nay on a specific proposal. And that would preclude a group coming in necessarily and buying up properties specifically for vertiports.
And may I ask you one other quick question? You had that meeting just the other day?
We had a meeting last night.
Okay. Did anybody bring up the San Carlos Airport where the air traffic control was removed? But I understand it's been restored.
As of last night, and this was a comment made by SFO. And so they really are not the ones to ask. It would have been the FAA, but they weren't there. But they have been keeping tabs on that because they are also very concerned about there not being an air traffic controller at that facility. They did say that at their own tower, they're set up for 28 air traffic controllers. They're currently staffed. Again, FAA has it staffed at 26, but they feel that that is adequate staffing at this time. So but again, they couldn't comment on what was happening at San Carlos Airport because it's a different jurisdiction. But they have been keeping abreast of the situation because it does affect their operations.
Thank you.
And we had a moment of silence for the air disaster in DC.
Thank you, Terry. All right, so moving on to written communications. Ingrid, do you have any written communications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Written communication was received from Dollar regarding Guadalupe Quarry, Hebert, San Bruno Mountain Warehouse, Mercer, Reject Quarry EIR, Zarin, Mountain Project, La Croix, Guadalupe Quarry, Draft EIR, Carlino, Fire Mitigation. Council, I'm sorry, Carlino, thank you to fire chief.
Great, thank you so much. All right, oral communications, number two. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor and council, and welcome councilmember Kern. So I just wanted to revisit the comments that I made in the past. And I've made them every year at the appropriate meetings, like at the budget meeting. And it has to do with dangerous trees. And at our last meeting, our previous city manager said that my comments were irresponsible. And if you look up the word irresponsible, it's not a good word. It's really bad. And it says that it's rash and it's, you know, all these negative words associated with the word irresponsible. And then our current city attorney, Tom, said that my comments were presumed facts. Okay? What I said at that meeting was that we have a lot of dangerous trees. And you are liable if something happens, if the tree is dead, diseased, or improperly maintained. And where I'm going with this is the improperly maintained aspect, okay? None of you challenged the city manager or the city attorney when they made those comments. And it seemed like the whole subject just died, okay? I thought that was really, it wasn't okay that nobody took action on those comments because those are serious comments, especially from the city attorney, that you know better. Presumed facts, okay? The fact is, dead, diseased, or improperly maintained, you're liable, okay? San Mateo County got sued for $47 million because a tree in a county park fell on a tent. Didn't even kill the boy, but he had his pelvis and one of his legs amputated. $47 million lawsuit. The city of Whittier, $47 million lawsuit because a tree limb fell down and killed a woman at a family gathering. Bowling game outside of City Hall. Some woman was awarded $14 million because a tree branch fell down and paralyzed her from her waist down, okay? I said that our city could go bankrupt. What's our annual budget in the city? And I know, and it's been said, that, well, the council can't say anything when you come up here and make comments. You can say something. You just can't take action on it, okay? Nobody said nothing to the city manager to put him in his place, our previous city manager, not our new city manager. And nobody said anything to Tom about his comment about presumed facts. And I don't want to beat this thing with a stick, but, I mean, come on, we're liable. This city is liable. Any arborist will tell you that these trees are dangerous, all up and down the industrial park, all these eucalyptus trees. Well, I'm not even talking about the fire aspect. I'm talking about falling down on our infrastructure and injuring and killing people. That little boy, a tree fell down at a park. I mean, you're at a campground expecting that there's big trees there, but the fact that the tree was diseased, it fell down and injured him. A $47 million lawsuit here in San Mateo County. So how are my comments irresponsible? Or the comments that I made, how are those presumed facts? By. by the highest authorities we have in this town? And, you know, I don't know if Tom's going to chime in tonight, but he seemed to chime in that night, and so did the city manager, which wasn't what they should have done. They shouldn't have. What they did was they were basically reprimanding me and calling me irresponsible and presumed fact. So if that's how we're going to conduct business and nobody's going to put them in their place when they say things like that, and nobody has come up with any study. Hey, we need to look at these trees. We need to have an arborist come out and look at all these trees. And you know what the arborist is going to find? And I'm not even an arborist. He's going to say those trees are dangerous. That fact puts this city in a real bad situation, so. You know, I don't just come to council meetings to complain. I come here to congratulate. I represent this community by trying to do things that are right. I'll give the school credit, the school district, a lot of credit because back, what was his name, Ronan? Our old superintendent? When I made that comment to him about how dangerous the trees were around the schools, they took action. They cut a lot of trees down. They did do something about it, okay? So I know you can't do it all. I don't know how we're going to come up with a grant or if we're going to do some kind of, whatever we're going to do to be able to take care of these trees. But, you know, it's one thing to have property damage. It's one thing to lose infrastructure. You know, I told the fire department, you have those eucalyptus trees right where the guys are doing training outside the fire department, those eucalyptus trees. And one fell down and landed on the Mission Blue Nursery. If it would have went the other way, we would have had a different situation. So I've been told at a council meeting one time by our old city manager, Ann Randy, and our city attorney, that just because Paul says the sky is falling doesn't mean the sky is falling. And two weeks later, a mother and her daughter got killed out on Bay Shore. If you Google examiner reporter, they want to do the dog show at the Cow Palace. She went to pick her daughter up, and it was back, way back when, when all we had to do was one phone call to have the K-Rail moved out of the way on Bay Shore. Nothing happened. Two weeks later, a mother-daughter got killed out there on Bay Shore, a long time ago.
So Paul, you bring up a great point about the trees.
Well, I bring it up. I bring, I brought it up every year, and nothing's ever been done about it. And you guys didn't put them in their place. And that really bothered me.
I can sense that. And I appreciate you coming here, and we will provide some information.
I'm not saying the sky is falling. These are serious, serious things, okay? So when are we going to do something about it? And it's not up to this, if the city's not going to do it and the powers that be like to name-call, name-call members of the community.
Paul, we're not going to go there. You mentioned, you mentioned the issue about the trees, and we're taking that feedback.
Well, okay, can you tell me, can you tell me why we're not going to go there?
We're not supposed to have, you know, interaction.
No, you can have interaction. That's the problem here. You can have interaction. You just can't make any decisions. You can have interaction with me. You could talk to me.
But we're not going to do that.
Why?
If you want to have a conversation with me after the meeting.
My question to you was not what are you going to do about the trees? What do you do about people that say things like that about members in this community? I could go on and on about what's been said about members in this community.
Paul, thank you very much. Please.
Okay, so how do we proceed?
You know, I'll have a conversation with you after the meeting.
We've had this conversation.
You need to sit down, please.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Michelle, if you can make a brief, please. Thank you.
There's also a hand raised.
Two things. One, there are still some dangerous trees out at the Marina, so I hope we take care of those before they take care of themselves. I want to know what progress we have made in securing the acres that the city owns and having all those deeds filed because it went undone from 2017 until now, and I believe it's still undone. And I'd really like to make sure it gets done as soon as possible and no more sitting on our thumbs about it, okay? Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. All righty, Christine, online, if you can make a brief, please.
Yeah, point of order. You haven't offered public comments since item N. I wanted to comment on the local policymakers group. And I invite Frank to reach out to me. I am a user of Caltrain. There are things about Brisbane that need to be addressed. And if you're not using Caltrain and you're not familiar with the issues, you won't be able to speak to them at the local policymakers group. So, and the utilization since electrification has doubled when I compare December 2023 to 2024 with Brisbane as the station of origin. So, and there's great potential to be able to expand the use of Caltrain and other transit, something that we ignore even though we have goals around reducing vehicle miles traveled in the city of Brisbane. So please, Frank, I'd be happy to be a resource to you. Thank you.
I think as a point of clarification or for information, we don't, the council doesn't take public comment, I don't believe, on staff reports or mayor council matters. But that's why we have oral communications number two, just in case there's something else you'd like to say.
All right, well, thank you all for attending. I think we got through a lot of stuff. And we will adjourn to our next meeting later in the month. February 20th, I believe. Ingrid? All right, thank you.